Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 6, 2022 work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Hope you're well today. Before we jump into your regular work session agenda, Meg Pittenger should give you an update on street closure S 2201. May recall, you deferred that a couple of months ago, and it would have been coming back today. So, Meg.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Yes, we had a meeting with the applicant, as requested by the planning commission, to talk about the issues that are going on out there at Williamson Road with that dead-end street closure. And what we are going to try and pursue now is an encroachment agreement with them and the city, which would allow their peer development to possibly occur out on that right-of-way portion out in the water, and then just put up some signage on the land portion. So to allow that to transpire, to get them to have their site plan and the legal agreement to be drafted, we are requesting that planning commission vote to defer that for another 60 days to allow that process to go forward, and then ultimately, the application may end up being withdrawn.
Thank you, Ms. Pittenger. Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Pittenger? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to the regular work session agenda. First item is use permit 22-12, and Julie Chop will give this presentation.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Julie Chop, principal planner with the City of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a use permit for an urban agricultural facility to grow and cultivate industrial hemp on the approximately 1.45 acre property located at 1300 High Street. The property is zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU and is in the innovation overlay district. The site is located along High Street in between Godwin Street and Armstrong Street, and the property contains an existing 18,584 square-foot block structure. The property is in the current location, the property is the current location of a used vehicle sales, repair, and servicing facility. The existing building includes a glass showroom, a service area with five bays, and a paved lot for parking and the outdoor display of vehicles. North of the property at 1300 High Street is a large commercial building zoned general mixed-use GMU. To the west is a religious institution that is zoned NMU. Further west across Godwin Street is vacant land that is also zoned NMU. The parcel to the east of the site across Armstrong Street is zoned NMU and is largely asphalt and vacant of structures. Beyond this parcel, our commercial property is zoned NMU. South of the subject property across High Street is a commercial vehicle sales use that is zoned NMU. The applicant, Green Relief, is an industrial hemp grower licensed by the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Earlier this year, the applicant submitted an application to rezone this property from NMU to the industrial zoning district in order to utilize the property for cultivating industrial hemp, as well as heavy manufacturing to process and extract CBD oil. The applicant withdrew this rezoning application prior to the city council public hearing. The applicant is now requesting a use permit for an urban agricultural facility in order to use the existing building to grow and cultivate industrial hemp. The applicant now plans to transport the industrial hemp to a separate manufacturing location for the processing and extraction of CBD for the manufacturing of products for human consumption. The project narrative submitted with this application indicates that the manufactured CBD products may be returned to the site and sold as retail, as a retail operation, which is permitted by right in the NMU zoning district. The operation will utilize advanced hydroponic cultivation techniques and will ensure that the hemp grown is at or below the prescribed THC levels. The recommended conditions within the staff report below, or report, require the applicant amend the use permit in order to grow and cultivate hemp above the state prescribed THC limit, unless preempted by state law. The project narrative states that the urban agricultural facility, as well as the retail sales use, will operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Scheduled pickups of cultivated materials will occur during normal business hours, and no large trucks or 18-wheelers will be used to transport products on or off-site. The facility approximates employing four part-time and six part-time employees to operate the establishment. A security system will be installed and operated that provides perimeter access control and monitoring for entry and exit to include card readers and intercom system, request to exit devices, door contact, and electric lock interface, and CCTV cameras. The top of this slide shows the proposed facade elevation facing Godwin Street and the proposed facade elevation facing Armstrong Street on the bottom of the slide. This slide shows the front elevation facing High Street, as well as the rear elevation. The applicant plans to close four of the five existing service bays with the bay closest to Armstrong Street to remain open for the transport of harvested materials in three-fourth-ton vans from the property approximately four times per year. The applicant proposes to remodel the front facade of the existing structure with painted masonry, storefront glass, hardy plank siding, and an artificial green screen. The recommended conditions require that the applicant remove existing parking lot lights, building signage, as well as the freestanding sign along High Street prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, as shown in the provided elevations. The recommended conditions also require the applicant to submit for review and install new lighting that is adequate to ensure safety and security throughout the exterior of the property. The conditions require that the applicant install an eight-foot-tall opaque decorative fence along the property line where it abuts the existing religious institution. The property is designated on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for commercial use. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with the recommended conditions. With the conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan, it's appropriate in this location, and is compatible with the surrounding area. As of yet, no comments from the public have been received regarding this application. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop?
Hi. Good afternoon. So basically, the, the change from the last time is that they're taking it off-site to extract, and then bring, so they're growing it, shipping it off-site, and then they're bringing it back for the retail sales?
Correct.
Okay. And you mentioned one more thing about the, the state levels.
Mm-hmm.
What, what was, can you mention that again?
Sure. So they have indicated that they will grow the industrial hemp at a level that is below or at the state prescribed levels. So we just, we included a recommended condition that if they, you know, if that, if that changes, then it would require them to come back and amend their use permit. So like, if the state law changes, then allows them to, to grow marijuana or something.
Okay, and that's, and that's, that's just based on the state laws?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Chop?
I just want to clarify one thing regarding Commissioner Coleman's question. So the, the application did change within the use, but it's also, they withdrew the rezoning application. So in this application, it would, the district would remain NMU, and they would be conducting urban agriculture by growing the CBD, and then the retail sales is also permitted within the NMU.
So they were going to rezone it for the manufacturing portion?
Correct.
Of the, of the zoning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Chop? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have two Chesapeake Bay exception applications that'll be coming before you today, so Amy Mervine will be presenting CBE 22-05 and 22-06.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This is Amy Mervine, senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. I will provide a brief explanation of why the applicant's proposal is before you today. Back in the late 1980s, city council adopted a Chesapeake Bay preservation area map, which designates certain properties as located within the resource protection area, or RPA. This slide provides a simple explanation of the RPA. The RPA is located immediately adjacent to water bodies with tidal influence. It is composed of any tidal wetlands, which is, which can be vegetated or a mud flap, as well as a 100-foot buffer of land. The 100-foot buffer is composed of a 50-foot seaward and a 50-foot landward component. As I've listed here on this slide, the planning commission's role is to review accessory structures within the entire 100-foot buffer and principal dwelling and necessary utilities within this 50-foot seaward buffer. Today's request is for development of a pool within the 50-foot landward buffer. I just need one second. My legs.
Sure, take your time.
It's like, I should have eaten more lunch before. Today's request is for development of a pool within the 50-foot landward buffer, which requires your review and approval. Under the circumstance of a denial by planning commission, an applicant may appeal their request to the circuit court. If appropriate, the commission may request an amendment of an applicant's submittal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. This Chesapeake Bay exception request involves the property at 2440 Sterling Point Drive. The .38 acre property is in the general residential GR zoning district. The property contains a two-story, 2,403-square-foot, single-family dwelling constructed in 1956. The property was platted prior to October 1, 1989, and approximately 84% of the property is located within the RPA. A city pump station adjoins the property to the east and the Elizabeth River to the south. Single-family residential properties are located to the west and across Sterling Point Drive to the north. Oops. Sorry about that. I have provided the site plan here, and this next slide is a zoomed-in version of the site plan with the 50-foot landward buffer shown in blue and the 50-foot seaward buffer shown in orange for visual representation for this presentation. The applicant's proposal includes a 15-by-25 in-ground swimming pool with a three-foot-wide pervious paver pool band previously proposed as a three-foot-wide concrete band. In an effort to minimize land disturbance, plywood and crane mats will be utilized to reduce the total land disturbance due to the use of heavy mechanical equipment. The total disturbed area within the buffer is 995 square feet, a reduced amount of land disturbance by 969 square feet from the original proposal. The finished swimming pool will be located completely within the 50-foot landward buffer. The applicant is also proposing to remove an existing 80-foot square foot, 80 square-foot shed currently located within this 50-foot seaward buffer and restore the 80 square feet back to a vegetated state. No trees are proposed to be removed for this project. A detailed project narrative of the differences specified from the previous application are also included with the applicant's submission. A WQIA, or water quality impact assessment, is required for projects that include, sorry, for projects that include land disturbance within the RPA buffer. The required number of planting units is three, and the applicant is proposing an additional unit of, for a total of four planting units. The total planting units consist of four canopy trees, eight under-story trees, and 12 small shrubs. The plants have been chosen from the DCR buffer modification and mitigation manual plant list. Staff recommends denial of the Chesapeake Bay exception request. Staff is unable to support development of an in-ground pool within the resource protection areas 100-foot buffer because the purpose and intent of the Portsmouth City Code, Section 9.1 Chesapeake Bay ordinance, is to minimize encroachments and land disturbance within the RPA. If approved by planning commission, staff has proposed several conditions within the staff report. To my knowledge, one public comment was received by email in support of the application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Mervine?
I have one. A few months ago, another one, I believe, in the same area came up. That's not the same one. This is not the same one.
No, this one came back in November of 2021 through you guys.
This, this one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So, can I ask what changed then?
Yeah, so pretty much the, I probably should have included the original plan as well. So originally, he had a three-foot-wide concrete band around the pool, which is now pervious pavers, which is supposed to help with stormwater infiltration, stuff like that. He's also, here, I'll pull up the, so he's also removing the 80-foot squares, square-foot shed, I can never say that one right, which is located within the 50-foot seaward buffer to come back to a vegetated state, so that's new. Speaking with engineering and staff, we were able to use the crane mats and plywood to kind of minimize the total land disturbance because he's going to have to use the heavy equipment to dig out the in-ground pool. So that was a reduced total by 900, and, whoops, wrong page, 969 square feet. So he reduced that total amount by almost half. And then there was a couple other things. He's also including an additional planting unit, so instead of the, he's required to have three, and now it's a total of four. And anything else he had listed within there was in the narrative he had sent. But those, those were just the main points that I pulled from.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Mervine? Thank you, ma'am.
Awesome. Well, I'm also presenting the next application as well.
Tell you what, before you do, Ms. Mervine, let me take this opportunity. I see the mayor and the city manager have joined us, and it's a pleasure to have you with us today. I'm sorry, continue, Ms. Mervine.
Yeah, you're good. Gives me a break. All right. So I'll now present the next application. Again, this is Amy Mervine, senior planner with the City of Portsmouth, and I will provide a brief explanation of why the applicant's proposal is before you today. Back in the late 1980s, city council adopted a Chesapeake Bay preservation area map, which designates certain properties as located within the resource protection area, or RPA. Today's request is for development within the 100-foot RPA buffer, which includes encroachments into the 50-foot seaward buffer, which requires your review and approval. Under the circumstance of a denial by planning commission, an applicant may appeal their request to the circuit court. If appropriate, the commission may request an amendment of an applicant's submittal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. This Chesapeake Bay exception request involves the property at 1 Wild Duck Lane. The 17.71 acre property is in the industrial IN zoning district. The property currently has an existing asphalt parking lot, concrete foundation, and structure on the northwest portion of the property, and various sized concrete foundations located throughout. The rest of the property is currently undeveloped. The property was formerly utilized as the local, as the coal-fired power station owned and operated by Cogentrix and was demolished in 2020. The property was platted prior to October 1, 1989, and approximately 24% of the property is located within the RPA. The Virginia International Gateway Port Facility is located across Wild Duck Lane to the north and an inlet of the Elizabeth River to the east, west, and south. This slide shows an aerial of the property. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing concrete foundations and to construct 72,000 square foot of building and associated infrastructure for a new warehouse transload facility within the 100-foot buffer. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance requires the approval of an exception to develop accessory structures within the 50-foot seaward buffer and any, 50-foot landward buffer and any encroachments within the 50-foot seaward buffer. And this slide shows a couple, just for visual representation, some site photos I had taken. This plan shows the existing development area within the 100-foot RPA, which is noted in red. This plan shows the existing development noted in red and the newly proposed development noted in blue. This, the subject property contains 4.3 acres of land within the RPA. Approximately .71 acres of existing development, the concrete foundations, is located within the 100-foot buffer. The applicant is proposing an additional 1.05 acres of new development within the 100-foot buffer, approximately .2 acres or 8,627 square feet, of which is proposed within the 50-foot seaward buffer. A water quality impact assessment, or WQIA, is required for projects that include land disturbance within the RPA. The WQIA design narrative shows conceptual BMPs, which will go through site plan review. Staff did not receive a buffer mitigation planting plan, but the application narrative references that the applicant is open to discuss. This has also been included as part of the conditions. Staff contacted the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, or VDEQ, for local guidance on the interpretation of redevelopment and development within the RPA buffer. VDEQ responded on August 24 with local guidance in reference to the proposed Chesapeake Bay exception request. The response is as follows. "My team and I have discussed, and in our review, the city's position is in accordance with the regulations and the guidance as it relates to the locality implementing the program in regards to development versus redevelopment. It appears the city has followed the development criteria for resource protection areas, 9 VAC 25-830-140, and exceptions, 9 VAC 25-830-150C criteria, in their analysis of the proposed project. Additionally, in particular with the 50-foot seaward buffer, we advise all localities that in accordance with the regulations and intent of the Bay Act, further encroachment or development into the 50-foot seaward buffer should be avoided." Mouthful. "Staff recommends denial of the Chesapeake Bay request, exception request. The proposal does not comply with the purpose and intent of the Portsmouth City Code, Section 9.1 Chesapeake Bay ordinance, which is to minimize encroachments and land disturbance when the, within the resource protection area. The applicant is proposing 1.05 acres of new development within the 100-foot RPA buffer, approximately .2 acres or 8,627 square feet, of which is proposed within the 50-foot seaward buffer. No encroachments into the 50-foot seaward buffer are permitted. If approved by planning commission, staff has proposed several conditions within the staff report. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions."
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Mervine?
Sorry, me again.
You're good.
In, in the report, it stated that the, the warehouse was an accessory structure? You stated that?
So, um, the accessory would be the infrastructure, so they're, here, I can bring up the plans. So the accessory infrastructure would be all of the parking, the asphalt parking they're proposing. The warehouse building would be technically considered the principal structure on the property. So that wouldn't be the accessory part.
Okay. But wouldn't the, isn't the parking required for the warehouse? If, how can, I guess I'm wondering, how would that be an accessory to the warehouse?
So they're proposing a lot more parking than what's required. We had spoken to DEQ this week, and that was something that they had brought up, is that they might want to revise their plans. I'm not sure, I can't remember what the zoning part, the zoning code for the zoning ordinance is for parking.
So the parking that, that it would be required by the zoning ordinance would be the car parking that is kind of to the north of the site and west of the building. The parking that's going into the buffer is that trailer parking, the truck parking, which is not required by any code, south of the building. That's the part that's actually going into the buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Mervine? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes all the items we'll be having for you this afternoon on your regular session. We do have two staff presentations for you this afternoon. We'll start off with a presentation on the city's innovation district, and that'll be Brian Swets. Little technical difficulties here. We will switch and do our second presentation on the RAISE grants, both in the same general area, so we'll start with Carl Jackson.
We're easy to get along with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, commissioners. And I hope you don't mind, I'm going to keep my mask on this time for the presentation. And good afternoon, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. Of course, my name is Carl Jackson, manager of transportation planning. It is my pleasure to present to you information about the RAISE grant program and the complete High Street Innovation Corridor project. So last year, President Biden signed the Bipartisan Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which created about 1.3 trillion in transportation spending. This is the largest infrastructure spending in our nation's history. Approximately 550 billion of that will be spent through FY26, 15 billion for local governments in formula grants, 6.5 billion in discretionary grants. One of those grants is the RAISE grant program. RAISE, of course, stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure Sustainably and Equitably. It's a discretionary grant program that helps communities plan and carry out projects with local and regional impact. And of the 2.2 billion that was announced for FY22 by the Secretary of Transportation, only 166 projects out of thousands that were submitted nationwide received funding. And nearly two-thirds of this year's recipients were in areas of persistent poverty. And here in Portsmouth, of course, with our higher rates of poverty and unemployment, but in addition to that, a city that is a critical player to national defense, to the port of Virginia, we also have several federal partners. Approximately 50% of our city right now is untaxable. And particularly of importance here in Portsmouth, and something that Mr. Swets will talk about, is our innovation overlay district. Commissioners, you may remember back in 2021, you approved this innovation overlay district. It's within the uptown area and approximately 500 parcels, which were rezoned to, back to their more traditional zoning categories, to encourage, to encourage more creative and more sustainable development within the area. And at the core of this innovation district, of course, is High Street, 1.3-mile segment of High Street, just west of Effingham, between Chestnut Street and the MLK Expressway. We've identified this corridor as the complete High Street Innovation Corridor. But unfortunately, if you go through this corridor today, you kind of feel as though the magic has ended. You know, you go through the area, you feel like you've left the city's vibrant urban core. High Street becomes four lanes, undivided, very low traffic volumes, vacant parcels, empty lots. Aging pedestrian infrastructure, broken curb. Aging pedestrian infrastructure, broken curb, very uneven sidewalks, and limited landscaping. Several deteriorated buildings and vacant uses throughout the district. So improvements to High Street is key to Uptown and Portsmouth as a whole. And the Complete High Street Innovation Corridor, this one point three mile segment that we're talking about, will incorporate national complete street recommendations, which have been adopted by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Project provides traffic calming, improves safety, optimizes land uses within the area, and will begin to address some of the issues of inequity that have plagued this community for so long. And as you could see from this diagram, High Street will be reduced from four lanes to two, which will allow us to incorporate wider sidewalks, street trees, on-street parking, bus pull-offs, on and off-street accommodations for cyclists, a raised landscape median, which will serve both as traffic calming and stormwater management, ten-foot shared-use path, which is critical to retaining High Street as part of the regional Southampton Roads Trail. Few simulations, if you look at the current eastward view of High Street between Chestnut and Elm, will be transformed. You'll have single travel lane, you'll have a new street trees, roadway medians, dedicated turn lanes to improve safety and turning movements. Some perilous intersections like High Street and Godwin will be transformed into high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian signals, and additional streetscaping. So that was our plan for the area, and I'm proud to announce, as you all may have seen the local media and such, that Portsmouth was awarded a nineteen point three million-dollar RACE grant. It's highly competitive grant, it's something that we're very proud of, for the Complete Street Innovation Corridor. And this was one of the only infrastructure projects that was funded in Hampton Roads, and one of only six projects that was funded throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. So very proud of that. We're expecting a more official announcement from the U.S. DOT within six to eight months. At this time, we'll also receive project funding through our state and federal partners at VDOT, FHWA, who will help us with project coordination and development. And we're hoping that preliminary engineering and environmental work will begin in the spring of twenty-three. Construction should take two to three years to be completed. And I stand by for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Jackson? Let me ask you just one. Will the bike lanes remain?
Yes, well, what we have now, Commissioners, we have bike sheroes that are in the street. Those will remain, but with, what we're doing by reducing from two lanes to one lane, we actually have the potential to convert those sheroes to bike lanes. But we also will have some off-street accommodations, a shared-use path, because there are a lot of cyclists that don't feel comfortable riding in the street, no matter what you put there. So if we have a shared-use path, okay. Well, sir, you'll feel a lot safer biking through the corridor on a nice wide shared-use path that's off the street.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commissioners, any, any questions of Mr. Jackson?
Yes, with closing the lane, will that affect how they have parades coming down High Street?
It, it should improve it, actually. If you think about the parades that we have through downtown and Old Town, you know, there's only one lane in, in this section of High Street. You know, we have a nice median, we have on-street parking, and we still manage to have some very nice parades. We're trying to do that same kind of element in the Uptown area to make it a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
I think we're now ready for the innovation district presentation.
Okay, take two. Good afternoon, planning commission members. My name is Brian Swets, I'm the city's comprehensive planning manager. Along with this exciting grant that we're getting for improvements along High Street, this will hopefully also serve as catalyst for this innovation district that we're working on. The innovation district is outlined in red here, although I will stress that this is preliminary at this point, this is also the same boundaries as our old D-two zoning district, if you all remember that from our Uptown work, that's been changed back to traditional zoning. We will be looking at whether we want to change these boundaries, but for right now, this is the area that we're looking at with High Street running down the center. Trust me when I say that the next slide starts to get into the outreach plan that we're looking at for this innovation district. The innovation district is going to be designed to be a place where we look to try to identify emerging economic sectors, and we want to try to find ways to get new, young businesses coming into the area. We want to make the place more attractive for workers and for people to live there. We believe that the infrastructure projects that Carl was just describing will help to do that, and they will facilitate the ability for people to interact in kind of non-traditional ways and not expective ways, hopefully then leading to collaboration and new ideas that maybe people were not necessarily anticipating. So in order to do that, we are going to start our outreach by holding some listening sessions. We have identified almost forty-five people who either live or work in the district, or who have some sort of significant personal or professional network here in Portsmouth that we want to tap into that knowledge base. We are going to be meeting on September nineteenth and September twentieth with groups of up to four people for fifty minutes at a time. And the idea is not for us to tell them about the innovation district, but for them to tell us about what they do. And if you were going to design a place to live and work, what would you want that place to look like? We're hoping that by engaging people from wide varieties of industries, from TCC and ODU and Norfolk State in the, in the university sector, to Virginia Port Authority, to banking, to real estate, to development, to local business owners, to local residents and civic leagues, we're casting a very wide net in hopes that we can get a really full participation from a whole broad range of people from the very beginning, and we can use that feedback from the very beginning to inform the decisions that we make over the next year and a half or so as we work through our planning efforts in the innovation district. We have identified nineteen or twenty days where our consulting team will be here in Portsmouth. Most of those will be looking at doing public outreach events. After our listening sessions in September, we will be putting out a citizen input form in November, and then February, was it February, March, April, May, we will be doing a public meeting in the Uptown area once per month. Each of those meetings will last for two hours, and they will have two different topics, two different themes that we'll be discussing. We've budgeted in some time for some city, some city workshops in June and July, and our aim is to be completed sometime in the winter of twenty-twenty-four, early in the winter of twenty-twenty-four. So that's all I have for you now, because like I said, we are just kicking off this project with these listening sessions coming up in two weeks, but I will be happy to answer any questions for you if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Swet. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Swet? There seems to be none, thank you, sir.
Well. Um, yes, Meg Pittenger needs to make an announcement.
Since it does have my name down here in the director's update still, which I'm not, but I just want to let Commissioners know that weekend before last, our very own Julie got married to her longtime sweetheart, so congratulations to Julie.
And that's all we have.
Commissioners, that, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Ball. Commissioners, are there any other discussions we need to have at this time? If there are none, this concludes the work session of September sixth, twenty-twenty-two. We will come back into regular session promptly at one-thirty. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, September sixth, twenty-twenty-second, being held in the city council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Page.
Present.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Curry.
Present.
Six members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the August second, twenty-twenty-second public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval of the minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August the second, twenty-twenty-two public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, October the fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at twelve-thirty P.M., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at one-thirty P.M., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their September the thirteenth public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item, S dash twenty-two dash zero-one, Mayor McPoint. Mr. Raleigh F.R. Seer, attorney-at-law, on behalf of Jeffrey and Colleen Stanek, requests the closure of the grassy dead end portion of Williamson Road to be evenly divided and maintained by the adjoining property owners. The closure area is adjacent to the applicant's home at ninety-six Williamson Road and abuts one hundred Monitor Road. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for single-family residential, low to medium density. The property is right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The staff coordinator is Carl Jackson. This item was deferred from the July the fifth, twenty-twenty planning commission meeting. The applicant has agreed to our proposed solution of entering into an encroachment agreement with the city to accommodate their peer rather than formally closing the right-of-way. We will ask the planning commission to defer for another sixty days to allow time to finalize this agreement. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, you've heard the report from the secretary relative to item S twenty-two dash zero-one and the request for a deferral of sixty days, which means it would come back up at the November meeting, if not withdrawn. We are in need of a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion to defer S dash twenty-two dash zero-one for sixty days.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer for sixty days. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
This item is deferred for sixty days by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, U.P. dash twenty-two dash twelve Uptown. Green Relief LLC requests a use permit for an urban agricultural facility to grow and cultivate industrial hemp on an approximately one point four-five acre property located at thirteen-hundred High Street in the neighborhood mixed-use NMU zoning district and the innovative overlay district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. The property is owned by Cars for Less Inc. and is identified as Tax Map thirty-eight, parcel one-thirty-three. Staff, staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, my name is Sean Thorwart. I'm the manager for Green Relief LLC. Like Ms. Julie Chop had explained earlier this morning, or this, yeah, this afternoon, we're looking to do urban agricultural indoor grow facility at that location. The original zoning that we had pulled, you know, rezoning that we, we pulled back on didn't allow us to have the retail space up front, and changing that area into industrial was not good for exactly, you know, for what you guys are trying to do for the location on, on that new strip down High Street by far. So keeping it at this, with the way it's zoned now, will allow us to do the, the indoor grow facility. We have another property on Collin Street, also in Portsmouth, less than a mile away. We'll be looking into building a steel, steel building on that location. It's already zoned industrial, it's out of the way, it's not on your main run, and we can do all our manufacturing at that location and return the product to the building for retail space. Nothing inside of the building is going to change. We definitely want to change the, at the front of the building to more appealing from the curb, the, the sign and the, the, all the parking lot pole lights, we intend to remove, provide a softer lighting from the building itself, so it just doesn't look like, you know, a runway going down High Street. We've, we've also added a lot of green effect to the front of the building. We're gonna, a lot of trim that's gonna go to give a more coastal effect off the top of the building. Green Relief is also looking to, it's just gonna be a green building. It's gonna be so, a lot of solar power, almost eighty-five percent of it will be, the power for the building is gonna be solar. We're looking to do at least fifty percent of the water to be retained from stormwater off of the building. All our water is, is gonna be recycled and reused, filtered and brought back in. So we're not gonna be dumping a lot of water, polluted water into the, to the waterways or into the drainage systems. The, the property is already, provides enough electricity, so we don't need to upgrade anything, we don't need to do any site work. The, the water lines and the sewer are both adequate for the, the project that we're trying to provide here. With the, with this size of a building and, and the kind of element that we're trying to bring to this area, I think it's right in line with what you guys are trying to do on that main High Street run. It's not a little pop-up store with a bunch of flags, you know, waving CBD flags or anything along those lines. It's just gonna be a nice elegant-looking building, and, and I think it fits in real well with you, what you guys are trying to provide.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Yes, I have several questions. First question was, have you guys met with or reached out to the adjacent church beside the Third Baptist?
Absolutely, absolutely. They're, they're on board with us. Our property line actually runs right up to their building, so our intentions are to, to provide an eight-foot fence, so they'll still have, they can still use the parking lot for their building, so they'll have off-street parking.
So anything you're doing now will not affect?
Not at all.
The parishions?
And we're actually gonna provide them with a designated location for parking off-street.
And will there be anybody else be able to sublease from utilizing that, that building?
For our building?
Yeah.
Nobody else will sublease. We're gonna own and operate the entire property. We would like to eventually, once the business is up and running, is provide a, like small version of university to bring classrooms inside of it and show the community that, you know, how to do this project. We have created a green mile aspect, where we'll be able to give tours of the property. People can come in, see how it's done from start to finish. This is in a little top-secret mission, we're opening this up. We want to teach, you know, teach everybody that anybody can't do this, and we'd like to help you try.
Last question.
Yes, sir.
What are your plans to get back to that particular community that you're gonna be located in?
Right now, not only is the job and the education that we're gonna provide, we also like to do the urban outdoor grows, so it's neighborhood raised flower beds. The parking lot's so huge that it's, the raised boxes, they'll be mobile, so we'll be able to allow the community to come in, plant vegetables, things of that nature, it's just a community garden outdoors, and that is only seasonal, obviously.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Yes, sir.
So I just want to be clear, the goal here is just to sell at this spot CBD products.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And so at no point do you intend to sell marijuana that has higher THC levels if the state provides?
If the state allowed something later on and we wanted to move that direction, it's not in the plans right now, we're not talking about it. As we stand right now, we're looking to provide just a better form of living for, you know, for our customers, as far as the CBD ointments, oils, and things of that nature. That's our goal. Like I said, we're, it's not a get-high location, that's not what we're That's not what we're trying to do. That's not the environment we're trying to bring in. Will financially, does it make sense later on if CBD sales fall? We've talked about it, but that's not the direction we're looking to go. And again, we'll have to revisit the city, just as Ms. Chop had mentioned earlier.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P.-22-12. I do have one registered speaker. You have up to five minutes to speak. Donna Si.
Hi, I'm Donna Si, and I'm really concerned about how Portsmouth is getting this type of agriculture, hemp, CDB, oils, whatever you call it, into our system here in Portsmouth. I'm just really concerned. We're making Portsmouth into an industrial, commercial being when our people are suffering, and they need more engagement and relationships with one another. I don't want to get up here and start talking about stuff, but I'm really concerned about how one part of the city has precedence over the other seven annexes in this city. There's more than one annex in this city. And then this overlay, this innovative overlay project with the road being torn up and fixed like the powers-that-be wants it. So they're going to fix it just the way y'all want it instead of having a relationship with the people in the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P.-22-12. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, the chair is in need of a motion and a second for U.P.-22-12 with conditions.
Chairman, I recommend that we motion to pass U.P. 22-12.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve U.P.-22-12. Commissioners, as I call your name, please respond with, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
No.
Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Commissioner Curry? We have a tie vote. And we will move on.
The motion fails.
Motion fails.
As I recall, the motion fails on a tie vote. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Our next item, CBE-22-05, Sterling Point. Raphael L. Allen requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for a swimming pool within the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area's 100-foot buffer at 2440 Sterling Point Drive. The property is zoned general residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 783, Parcel 39. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends low-to-medium single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or the representative for the, this application come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Raphael Allen. I'm going to focus on what I wrote to make sure that I don't lose track of everything I want to comment on. First, I want to thank the Commission for their time today and for the Planning Department's continued support over the past several years. As a lot of you may already know, this is my second visit to the Commission, seeking an approval for an exception. After my November Commission meeting in 2021, I'll be honest, I love feeling a little disappointed. I took several months from, I took several months off from thinking about the exception and honestly contemplated possibly moving. However, after a decade-plus of being a Portsmouth resident, I remembered how much I loved living here, my neighborhood, my neighbors, and how we intended for this to be our forever home. So went back to the Planning Department and asked for their help. I asked what was the best way to approach my next application, and essentially, what do I need to do to try to work to a yes? Today, I stand before you with an improved plan that has incorporated all of their comments and their suggestions. I think it's also important to note, as you can see in the staff report, that they essentially have no further comments or suggestions other than based on an approval from the Commission, they would require I continue to follow the process for constructing a pool in the city. The pool will be installed in the backyard in the area most suitable to limit land disturbance in the RPA. There's zero activity in the sacred 50-foot seaward buffer. Further and critically important, you'll note that we're removing zero trees, bushes, or other plants to make these improvements. You'll notice on our site plan that nearly our entire property, roughly 84%, 85%, is encumbered by the RPA. That in and of itself is a significant hardship. Only 2.4% of the RPA on our property would be impacted by the construction activity. We work with the City Planning and Engineering Departments on effective ways to further reduce our impact to the RPA, and I'd like to review those conversations with you all today. Based on feedback, and as you'll notice on the plan, we'll be installing either plywood or crane mats at the point of construction access to eliminate any disturbance to the turf that lies below. Based on feedback, we removed the three-foot impervious concrete band that surrounded the pool, and instead, we'll be installing three-feet impervious pavers to eliminate stormwater runoff. Further, based on feedback, we shifted the pool further away from the 50-foot seaward buffer, resulting in the closest corner of the pool being 86 feet away from the edge of water and 99 feet away at its furthest corner, as you'll note in the survey. We will be removing the shed that was installed by the previous property owner that lies within the 50-foot seaward buffer, and we'll restore that area back to a vegetated state, which provides roughly an 80-square-foot credit to the seaward buffer. Due to these efforts, we significantly improved, I'm sorry, we significantly reduced our disturbed area in the RPA, which now only requires us to install three planning units. However, based on feedback, we will be installing a total of four planning units instead of three, which exceeds what is required by the Act. Additionally, our proposed pool is 52% smaller than the average residential pool. I simply point all this out as I want to demonstrate that I took very seriously when reviewing the new plan. I wanted to come back with a plan that limited disturbance in the RPA so that I may be afforded the minimum relief necessary to proceed with the plan, and it also provides the highest positive impact to the RPA. Again, I'm removing no plantings at all. I'll be installing pervious pavers. The pool, by nature, captures water and reduces stormwater runoff into the river. I'm planting 12 new trees, 12 new bushes, and this work, in fact, will significantly improve the Resource Protection Area on my property, which I believe to be in harmony with the Act's intent. I'm here today as a fellow resident seeking approval on a plan that only you can approve, and I believe that I have crossed every T and dotted every I in an effort to do so. Again, thank you all for your time, and I'll stand by for any comments or recommendations.
Commissioners, are there any questions on Mr. Allen? There seem to be none. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-22-05. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name, and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, unless there's further discussion, the chair is in need of a motion for CBE-22-05.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve CBE-22-05 with conditions?
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Now, are we required to take another motion?
Question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for denial of S-22, oh, I'm on the wrong one. For CBE-22? What's the last?
Zero five.
Zero five. I make a motion for denial.
We have a motion to deny CBE-22-05. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to deny CBE-22-05. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry? This item is approved to be denied by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, CBE-22-06, Wild Duck Lane. Lawrence Benson with Kimley Horn on behalf of Justin Letcher requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for development of the warehouse transload facility and associated infrastructure within the 100-foot buffer at One Wild Duck Lane. The property is zoned industrial, IN, and is further described as Tax Map 719, Parcel Two. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends heavy industrial development for the property. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Thank you, Planning Commissioners. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address is 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Williams Mullen. So it's a trend today that you're seeing applications for the second time, like the pool application before this one. We are here for a second time, and I think that really speaks to the significance and the importance of this project. Certainly, it's important to my client. We believe it's important to the city of Portsmouth and the community, because this will have, and you will hear this from other speakers, this will have a significant beneficial impact to the, not only the port, but also to the city of Portsmouth. We certainly understand, you know, staff has a difficult job to do. Administering the CBPA is a very difficult job. Oftentimes, it requires the staff to say no to people, and it certainly results in you saying no as well on exception applications, like you did the one for the pool just before this one. But we understand where staff's coming from, but we obviously have a different view of the CBPA ordinance and the state-enabling regulations. This site, if you can turn to the aerial shot, so this is, this is, as you probably know, the old Cogentrix Power Station Plant, but I wanted to show you this picture and discuss this briefly about what the site is currently now. The site is predominantly either concrete or compacted gravel, and you'll hear later from Kimley Horn, the engineers, about what that means. But this site has no functioning RPA on it, and that's, this is really a good example of why redevelopment is allowed in the RPA, and just like water-dependent facilities, which the port is as well. Those are two examples of when redevelopment and water-dependent facilities are allowed to encroach into the entire RPA buffer, including the 50-foot seaward, which is admittedly, that is, that is the critical component of the CBPA. And the reason that the state law and the city code allows redevelopment to go up to and including the 50-foot seaward is because it's balancing the interest of the community in the city with valuable industrial development, but it's balancing that with the value of generally what you see redevelopment not having any sort of vegetated buffer, any sort of environmental mitigation measures anywhere on the site. So right now, rain falls onto the site and sheet flows into the Elizabeth River. So actually, with this exception request, the environmental benefits will actually be improved, because there will be a stormwater conveyance system that will be installed that will channel the water into retention lakes that will drain nutrients and sediments from the runoff and will result in a much cleaner site. Even though there will be trucks and heavy activity all over the site, it will be a more environmentally productive site. And I just want to stress that you, as a Planning Commissioner, and that's why we have Planning Commissions, right? Because the staff administers the CBPA ordinance and has limited discretion, but we have Planning Commissions to decide cases like this that are difficult, the laws are maybe a bit murky, but this is why we come to the Planning Commission and present these cases to the Planning Commission to decide what's, for what's best for Portsmouth. We believe this is a great plan of development. You have the ability to approve. I just want to talk briefly about what the staff has recommended in terms of, if you decide to approve this project, there are five recommended conditions. All five of those conditions are acceptable to the applicant, and I think that's a great, and one of those conditions is a buffer mitigation plan. That's condition number three, and I think that's a great compromise here, to allow redevelopment, important redevelopment on industrial, historically industrial property, to include a buffer mitigation plan that balances, again, the interest of the community and the interest of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. The applicant is Industrial Realty Group. They bought this property in 2019 and then commenced operations to demolish the old coal-fired power plant, and that was a wonderful thing for Portsmouth, because that was, that building was a nuisance, it was an environmental liability, and it needed to come down, and it needed to come down quickly. So IRG, what we call Industrial Realty Group, IRG, it was their intent to redevelop the property. So to date, there has been $6 million that has been spent to demolish that building and prep it for redevelopment. $500,000 of that was a grant awarded by the PPIC to encourage redevelopment on the property. The grant was specifically to encourage redevelopment and was used to demolish the coal-fired power plant. So similarly, we need the Planning Commission to encourage, just like the PPIC did, to encourage redevelopment on this site. You're going to hear from a number of officials from the port, from the PPIC, Kimley Horn, all discussing the environmental conditions of the site, environmental benefits of this project, and that's really the purpose of explaining that this is redevelopment. It's not new encroachment in the RPA. It is, as you can see, it is a, historically an industrial site and needs to be preserved for industrial, and this is particularly important for Portsmouth, because so much of the tax base is non-taxable. And so when you have sites like this that will generate significant amount of income to the city, we need to be able to preserve that and protect the bay, and we believe that this project will do both. Again, in conclusion, staff recommends five conditions. If you were to approve the project, all five conditions are acceptable. We think that's a great outcome here, a great compromise. If you need more information or you want to visit the site before you make a final decision, we'll make that available, make the site available to you. But we do ask that you approve today. The exception is we have strict timelines to complete the project, complete construction, and open the site for business. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions that you have. I do ask for your approval. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions on Mr. Palmer? Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on CBE-22-06. Our first registered speaker is Mr. Doug Smith. You have five minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As she said, my name is Doug Smith, and I'm the president and CEO of the Hampton Roads Alliance. Many years ago, I was the Economic Development Director here in Portsmouth. Many years ago, I was the economic development director here in Portsmouth. In those days, city manager Ron Massey would say to the staff and council from time to time, "Perfect is the enemy of good," meaning insistence on perfection often prevents implementation of good improvements. I would argue that this is the case with this application. If this project were being developed in a greenfield area, holding firm on the Chesapeake Bay encroachment would make sense. However, this is a redevelopment project that will allow you to make current environmental conditions better and allow Portsmouth to benefit economically, thus justifying an exception. In this region, the port hosts communities in Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Newport News usually do not have the available land to truly benefit from the growth of the port. From an economic development perspective, it's my understanding the project conforms with your comprehensive plan. The project represents a rare opportunity for Portsmouth to benefit from private development leveraging your port assets. Portsmouth residents will have an opportunity to obtain the available new jobs, fifty in Portsmouth, and another two-hundred-and-fifty from the complementary project in Suffolk, and the city will benefit from the taxes generated on a ten-million-dollar investment. Environmentally speaking, the project will remove existing impervious cover and establish a buffer where practicable and provide stormwater infrastructure as required, greatly improving the current conditions and offering a vast improvement over other likely uses such as truck storage with inadequate retention of stormwater. The city air quality will also benefit from the reduction of emissions generated by the round-trip truck traffic that this project would have to, if this project were to have to be located in another community. This is not an easy or simple decision, but I hope you will agree that the environmental improvements and the economic development benefits in this case warrant an exception to the encroachment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker, Lawrence Benson.
Good afternoon, I appreciate everyone taking the time again. This will be my second time up here to talk about this project with you all, it's great to see you again. I really don't need to take too much time, I just wanted to touch on one of the disagreements, or I guess one of the things that you'll hear us talk a lot about, say, the impervious cover within the buffer, and I know in the staff report, you'll read that and see that there's a disconnect here, because we're saying we're reducing the impervious cover, the staff reports have something different. And I really do hate to do this, but I just want to read the definition. So just to start off with Kimley Horn, I'm a licensed registered professional engineer in the state of Virginia. This is what I do all day long, I read reports, I make reports, this is my life. So I just want to give you a little bit of background, of, just kind of walk through the definition of what impervious cover is in the CBPA Preservation Overlay District definitions. So impervious cover means a surface composed of any material that significantly impedes or prevents the natural infiltration of water into soil. So just take that in again real quick, it's any material that significantly impedes or prevents natural infiltration of water into the soil. Impervious surfaces include, but are not limited to, roofs, buildings, streets, parking areas, concrete, asphalt, or compacted gravel surfaces. My case that I'm trying to make with you today, there are a lot of different surfaces out on this site, I would hope that some of you have gone out to see it by now, because we've talked about it a lot. Most of this site, mostly all of the areas that we are proposing to do any development, certainly fall under the category of a material that has significantly impeded or prevents natural infiltration. There are several areas of existing asphalt and compacted gravel surface that we are proposing to redevelop, and so I just want to make it clear that the disagreement, because it's easy to read that definition and just think impervious is asphalt, or it's roof, or it's building, but just want to set the tone here that that is not the only definition of what impervious cover is. So our project, we will be reducing the impervious cover when we do these stormwater calculations and talk about the quality benefit of our project. We are improving the water quality of the bay with this project. We are excited to bring this project forward, we want to be good neighbors, we want to help improve the water quality for this area, and this project will bring that. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker, David France.
Commissioners, my name is Dave France, I'm a professional engineer with Kimley Horn and Associates. I also am the vice chairman of the Bay Board in Virginia Beach, where I've been on that board for almost ten years, so I've seen probably a hundred applications or more come through. And I tell you that to say that this is an application that is the type that we see where there is disagreement between what has been presented in the staff report and what the applicant has, but is one that clearly the benefits outweigh any of the downside that you might perceive. I want to read to you something from the DEQ's website. They say that the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which was enacted by the Virginia General Assembly in 1988, is a critical element of Virginia's non-point pollution source management program. So a big thing that it's trying to do is make sure that we have less pollutants going into our bay, is why the whole act was created. What you have here is a gravel and asphalt lot that has been developed in the past that is currently running off all of those particulates and free matter into the bay with no treatment whatsoever. We will be bringing this site up to the current standards using the current stormwater regulations in order to make sure that that critical element of the Bay Act is met. It goes on to say that, as recognized in the Bay Act, healthy state and local economies and a healthy Chesapeake Bay are integrally related. Balanced economic development and water quality protection are not mutually exclusive. Now, one of the other items that Ms. Mervine brought up in her discussion with you, talked about the replanting and what we are willing to do, I would say that we are more than willing to do, we stated in MWQIA that we're going to actually restore an acre and a half of new buffer where there isn't any here today. So we're adding an acre and a half of CBPA buffer that you don't have on this property. Now, the specific design of that will come when we do the site plan, so we're not able to get the site plan processed yet, because we have to get past due first. So once you're able to make that decision, once you're able to push this forward, we'll do a very specific plan that'll be subjective for the site, that'll work with our site plan to restore the buffer in areas that currently there is none whatsoever. And the last point I want to make is, one of the other things that I have the privilege of being is one of the leaders of our industrial practice across the nation. My practice across the nation last year had about two-hundred-million dollars' worth of projects that we designed, which represents around four-billion dollars' worth of industrial developments. What we've presented here on the site plan, which you've seen, is the minimum that we can get away with, with this type of facility, to have it be operational. There was discussion in the open session about whether or not the parking spaces that we were providing was adequate or inadequate. We've actually limited them so that we can stay out of the critical areas of the buffer wherever we can. The size of the building dictates that there be areas of dock doors, those areas of dock doors have required areas for turning movements for trucks around them, and without those, the building can't function. So there was a question, I think, about whether that's an accessory or not, and perhaps it is an accessory by the definition, but it is absolutely fundamental to how these work. It is no less critical than the employee parking areas, you have to have a place for the vehicles to park for this thing to function. So I appreciate your time, I have a lot of expertise in this matter, I could go on for a very long time, but my time is short with you. If you have any questions, I'd please encourage you to ask us, we've been looking at this for a long time, we have a lot of information that we just don't have time to get in front of you in the short time we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker, Carl Murtagh.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Excuse me, my name is Carl Murtagh with Kimley Horn, I'm an environmental scientist with Kimley Horn. I've been doing this kind of work in Hampton Roads for twenty-five years. I've served as the same role that Ms. Mervine serves for Acomet County as a consultant, taking projects forward to their wetlands board and their CBPA board. So I understand the role that she plays, I understand how the regulations, in some cases, are not written very well for every project that comes forward, and yet how staff has to follow the regulations, that's what they're given. With that being said, as you've heard, I think there's a little bit of a, maybe disagreement in the interpretation of some of the regulations. The staff report presents the blue areas you see here as new development, and we believe it very clearly meets the definition in your ordinance of redevelopment. And I'm sorry that wasn't provided to you in the staff report as the way the definition of development was, but basically it says that redevelopment is development on lands that either are currently or were previously developed. And as you can see with the power plant here, all of those blue areas were previously developed, and so those areas meet the definition of redevelopment, again, a use that is allowed by right in the RPA, seaward and landward fifty feet of the RPA. All of our proposed improvements are within the fence line, are within that gravel area of the site and the area that were previously building pads and are currently concrete pads. One thing that this figure depicts, and it's hard to see, is between the last time we were before you and today, we received our geotechnical report back. There had been some debate as to the nature of the gravel area that was outside of the building pads themselves, and our geotechnical information, which we provided the city, show that throughout the entirety of the site, where there's not concrete or asphalt, we have between a half a foot and three feet of compacted gravel across that site. As Mr. France mentioned, the definition of impervious area includes compacted gravel in your ordinance. We're here before you to request an exception, and there are some elements that have to be met for an exception to be granted. One is that the exception is the minimum necessary to provide relief. As Mr. France stated, the site has been minimized in terms of the size of the building and the number of parking stalls for the trucks to meet the minimum requirements that the user needs for the development. We have optimized the building and parking lot layout to work as best we can with the nature of the site, the shape of the site being triangular, with our building being rectangular. And if we were to lose additional trailer parking spaces beyond what we have proposed, it would be very difficult for the user to make use of the project, and the project might not move forward. We're not asking for any special privileges. In the staff report, it talks about a house and a pool as an example of not being offered special privileges. Obviously, this is an industrial facility, it's a lot bigger than a standard residential site. We are asking for the minimum necessary requirements for the site, stormwater management, employee parking, trailer parking, and the building itself. The fact that this is the only, one of the only industrial zone pieces of property in the city of Portsmouth that is not an intensely developed area, not designated as an IDA, that matter alone is singling out this parcel for additional scrutiny, and the reason, in fact, we're here before you today. The exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and is not detrimental to water quality. As was stated, we're going to actually create an additional one-point-four or five acres of buffer.
Mr. Murtagh, you have one additional minute.
Thank you, sir. And reduce the impervious area in the buffer by almost an acre, point-nine-one acres. It's not based on circumstances that were self-imposed, the owner purchased this property with the power plant with the intent of demolishing it and redeveloping it, they've not sold it on the open market, and they intend to do that for themselves. And as mentioned before, we are offering to restore nearly two acres of buffer that doesn't exist today to improve water quality while putting on stormwater ponds that will exceed the required treatment by almost double what the city's ordinance requires. This exception is protective of water quality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker, Mr. Charles Dickerson.
Good afternoon, my name's Charles Dickinson. I am the industrial brokerage director for Harvey Lindsey Commercial Estate. I've been working in this market for twenty-three years. I'm on behalf, I'm here on behalf of my client IRG. They're, I guess the way I would phrase it to other people I've spoken to, they're kind of my unicorn. They're the largest private industrial owner in the country, they own over a hundred-and-thirty million square feet of industrial space. What they do, I'm just going to read this from their website, and then talk about a couple of things. IRG is nationally recognized as a leading force behind the adaptive reuse of buildings and facilities throughout the nation. IRG projects often involve acquiring underperforming real estate and redeveloping a creative repositioning plan to renovate, lease, and maintain the property to stabilization. Redevelopment, redeveloping otherwise obsolete buildings, corporate campuses, and industrial complexes resulting in a collaborative win for local communities, tenants, and IRG. IRG has been recognized for its success in solving complex real estate challenges, including converting corporate campuses into mixed-use projects and brownfield sites, including NPL Superfund sites into vibrant environmentally clean business parks. That's kind of their mission statement. A couple of examples of their successes that you all might not be familiar with, but you might be familiar with the sites. In Akron, Ohio, they took over the five-million-square-foot-forwarded-acre Goodyear World Headquarters. Goodyear was having a challenge attracting talent, and they were going to be moving to Charlotte, North Carolina. IRG came in, worked on a restructuring plan, they looked at the property differently than any other developer out there, different than Goodyear, and figured out a way to redevelop that site, keep Goodyear there, and they've got a large campus on that property with hundreds of jobs, you know, dozens of companies, and the first company that they recruited to that site after the redevelopment was a company from Charlotte, which was kind of neat. Another thing they did was McClellan Air Force Base, it's its own zip code, eight-thousand acres, they acquired that, and there was roughly five million square feet on that site. Today, they have thriving businesses, they have more than two-hundred-and-forty companies, there are more than fourteen thousand employees. Their bread and butter is acquiring sites that other people have ever looked, that see as environmental challenges, and redeveloping them to sites that are going to bring tax base and jobs back, and that's a perfect example of what they've done here. When I first started working with these guys, I was showing them the old Massimo Zanetti building, which you can almost see from here, and we were already working with a tenant out there, they were looking to buy the building, and I was telling them, pointing to some of the trailer parking on the side of the site, I said, you know, you've got to be aware that that is a former Superfund site, you can't really build anything on it. And this was one of my first meetings with these guys when they flew in, and they kind of laughed, and they said, Charles, we buy landfills and build buildings on them, you know, this is what we do, this is all we do. So they, I would challenge, you know, my, excuse me, any other developers out there to try to see if they have the same track record, or results, or case study. to try to see if they have the same track record, results, or case studies this group has. I can't think of anybody that does, and they're extremely interested in this site. We met with the Port of Virginia, Stephen Edwards, and we basically said, "What do y'all need?" And they said, "We need transload facilities, and the closer we can have them to the port, the better, the less traffic on the roads and everything else." And that's, we pretty much designed this.
Mr. Dickerson, you have one additional minute.
Okay, yes, sir. So we pretty much designed this facility, touching on what Dave was saying as well, but I'm hoping we can make this work because I'm hoping we can get them to do other developments in Portsmouth for sites that other people have passed up on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other registered speakers. However, if there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward. You have up to five minutes.
Good afternoon. Not sure what happened. I registered in advance and when I got here. So my name is Kathy Vick. I'm with the Port of Virginia. I'm our chief development and public affairs officer, and our CEO is out of the country right now, so he apologizes for not being here personally. But want to share with you all, I think you're aware, and some of you have been out to see the improvements at Virginia International Gateway here in Portsmouth. That's over $300 million of investment that we've made, and we just also approved a contract for $320 million in investment into Portsmouth Marine Terminal for clean energy to support offshore wind, bring Siemens Gomesa, which will bring over 300 jobs to Portsmouth. And that's what we want to continue to do. We've made over $1 billion in investment over the last three years, and we've got $1.4 billion additional investment to bring cleaner, more efficient operations inside our gates. But part and parcel to that is being a good neighbor. And we were awarded the most productive and efficient port in North America by the World Bank and S&amp;P earlier this year. These investments are bringing more cargo, but also more investment and more jobs to Hampton Roads. And we've worked with the city Economic Development Department to bring projects like these. Because it's back to school, I was sitting here thinking, you know, my kids, when we used to do back-to-school shopping, we went to the mall. Now, they sit at their computer, and we point and click. And that is also driving a lot more cargo to come through the port because we have to get it to fulfillment centers. And you see a lot of growth in that area, and when you look at a cross dock like this, what it does is it keeps half the trucks from having to bring the empty containers back to the port. So in addition to the improvements that you've heard about for the stormwater runoff, we will also reduce emissions on the surrounding roads by keeping additional trucks off of 164. So when you look at the way that we're trying to be a good neighbor and a good partner with the city, we could have bought this property. There would have been no tax revenue to the city. But we said, working with the city, let's work together and find a developer who can come in and reconstitute this site. You all may remember, it was our next-door neighbor, so we saw it on a regular basis and the emissions and the health impacts that came from that cogentrix plant. We worked with the developer to go to the PPIC because we had gone to the General Assembly along with the city to ask for these redevelopment funds. We worked with PPIC for a redevelopment project. So when the folks come up here and they talk about, is this development or redevelopment, the whole purpose from day one was for it to be a redevelopment and should be treated as such, which means that the impervious ground that should be, should be based on the previous development, meaning IRG is coming in and reducing that footprint, not encroaching more, and they're putting the, they're implementing the regulations that were put into place post-cogentrix, putting in the retention pond, making this better for the bay. So the bottom line is, when you're looking at a Chesapeake Bay Protection Act exemption, you're looking at what's best for the bay. And as Mr. France said, the initial General Assembly said, "How do we balance that with economic development?" This is the perfect project to do that. So we're hopeful that you'll vote yes to the exemption, which is yes to over 100 jobs, yes to $10 million in investment, yes to reducing emissions in the surrounding roads, and yes to improving this site from what it is today and what it was previously, to be more protective of the bay. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-22-06. If there is anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, the chair is in need of a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to vote for approval of CBE-22-06 with conditions from the city.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motioned and second to approve CBE-22-06 with conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
No.
Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
The motion is for, 4 to 2, is a no vote.
Right, the motion fails.
Motion failed by a vote of 4 to 2.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business?
No, sir.
That being done, Mr. Baldwin, do you have any further business?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, on the additional items.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.